Okay, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City Council Meeting for January 11, 2021. It is now 7:00 PM. And before we begin, I would like to ask just for a moment of silence for Marlene Ziel and also Vincent Leota Senior in their passing. Okay, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City Council Meeting. This time, I'd like to have the clerk take a roll call. It is now 7:00 PM.
Dudley?
And before we-
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
Nanadovic?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, here.
Let the record reflect that all seven council members are present. First order of business, and we'll go in order. There's a lot of meeting minutes that we have to approve tonight. The first one being the special council meeting for Wednesday, November 25, 2020. I would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of this meeting as written. Do I have a second?
A second.
On the motion made by myself and seconded by Chuck Donahue to accept the special council meeting minutes for Wednesday, November 25, 2020 as written, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Nay, I was excused that night.
Oh, so it's, you vote-
No.
Present or?
No.
No? Vote no, okay. Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Dayla Davis, yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Let the record show that the special council meeting minutes for Wednesday, November 25, 2020 passes with six yes votes and one no vote. Next one is the special council meeting minutes for Monday, November 30, 2020. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Davis?
I'd like to make a motion that we hold off. I sent an email for corrections and I didn't see a second email come back. I'm wondering maybe now if something's going on with Barb's email if Councilman Blake's information didn't get to her nor Donahue's nor mine.
Okay, and the motion made by Ms. Davis to, I guess, put this one off until we can get copies to everybody. Will the clerk take a roll call vote? We're gonna postpone voting on these minutes.
I guess the motion to amend?
Well, it'll be amended, but we don't know what the amendments are gonna be, so let's, let's, I'll tell you what, let's make a motion. Ms. Davis has made a motion to table this or take this particular meeting minute for November 30 off the agenda for tonight, and we'll place it on the next meeting's agenda.
Thank you.
Clerk, please take a roll call.
Okay. Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn? Vaughn?
Yes. Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Okay, the special council meeting minutes for Monday, November 30 will be placed on our next council meeting's agenda. Minutes of the regular, you're welcome, minutes of the regular meeting of council for the city of Garfield Heights for Monday, December 14, 2020. Do you, I would like to make a motion that we accept these minutes as written, but I understand that some of the council members did not receive this email. Does anyone want to make a motion to suspend these as well?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Davis.
I'd like to make a motion that we table these minutes until the next meeting as well.
Motion made by Councilwoman Davis to table the minutes of the regular meeting of council for Monday, December 14, 2020. And place it on the agenda for the January 25 scheduled council meeting. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Davis?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Is that everyone?
Yes.
Okay. By a vote of seven members, the minutes for the regular meeting of council will be moved, will be suspended to, or been placed on the legislation or on the agenda for the council meeting on Monday, January 25, and we will vote on them then. Next, I would like to make a motion to accept the special council meeting minutes for Tuesday.
I'll second that also.
On the motion made by myself and seconded by Councilman Donahue to accept the special council meeting minutes for Tuesday, December 22, 2020 as written, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
No excuse that night from the meeting.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Dayla Davis, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Okay, the special council meeting minutes for Tuesday, December 22, 2020 stands passed with six yes votes and one no vote. We'll move on now to the minutes of the city council work session for Tuesday, December 22, 2020. I'd like to make a motion to accept these minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion made by myself and seconded by Councilman Blake to accept the minutes of the city council work session for the city of Garfield Heights for Tuesday, December 22, 2020 as written, will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke. I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
No excuse on the 22nd.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Seconded by Councilman Blake to accept the minutes-
You muted, Mike.
Mike, you have to unmute.
Okay, Nanadovic votes yes.
Thank you. Davis?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask, I'm a little confused. I thought we already voted to table the work session.
No, we tabled the, the meeting minutes for Monday, the 30th, and we tabled the council meeting minutes for December 14. This was the special work session.
Okay, well then, I spoke out of turn because these are, these are the corrections that I sent, that I did not get a response back to.
We are already in the middle of a vote.
So I want to vote no.
Okay.
Okay. No. Blake?
Yes.
Okay, so by a vote of five yeses and two nays, the minutes for the city council work session for the city of Garfield Heights for Tuesday, December 22 passes as written. And that concludes all of the special meeting minutes and minutes of the, any of the, of the council in the past two weeks, I believe. So we'll move on now to written communications to council. Do we have any written communications to council this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman, none.
Okay. Do we have any reports coming out of committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a report from Mulet King of the Garfield Heights City School District. She is on the line. Ms. King, would you like to give the report? I can give you my time or I can read it?
Or I can read it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Garfield Heights City School District held its organizational meeting this afternoon where we elected officers and set up meeting, our meeting schedule for the year. Michelle Daniels will serve as the president and Mulet King as vice president for 2021. Meetings will be held on the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM with the exception of January and February due to holidays on Mondays. A special work session was held immediately following the organizational meeting where we discussed the return to school hybrid format. Students will begin transitioning back to the buildings in a 2-1-2 hybrid format beginning January 25. Group A students will be in the classroom, which will, it'll be about half of the students in a classroom. So it's A through K will be in the classroom Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday will be an asynchronous, will be a virtual day, so the teachers will have time to meet, plan, deep cleaning of the classrooms, and hold special tutoring sessions with students. And then on the Thursday and Friday, Group B will come into the school. So when, if you're not in school, you're working asynchronously at home. On Thursday at 6:00 PM, there will be a town hall hosted by Superintendent Hanky and members of the central office where they'll talk in more detail about the return to school hybrid model. That will be at 7, 6:00 PM on the, our YouTube channel. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, January 19, 2021 at 6:00 PM, and you can also view that via the school district's YouTube channel.
Thank you, Ms. King, and congratulations on the, the vote of vice president, and please let Ms. Daniels know we congratulate her as well.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports or reports coming out of committee? If there are none, we will move on to the report of the mayor. Mayor, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a report. I would like to start off tonight by talking, I have a email from Senator Sandra Williams on our energy bills. The email says, are your energy bills too high? Do you need help? At 1:30 PM, this year's event will be by appointment only. The location will be provided after appointments are made in order to comply with COVID-19 safety precautions. Space is limited to scheduled appointments. You can call 614-466-4857. This program has been a large help to many residents that are suffering, you know, through this COVID virus, not working and getting behind on their bills. So I highly recommend, if you need help, go to this forum. Next, I want to talk a little bit, on a sad note, about some people that we lost, residents we lost this last week. As was said earlier, and I appreciate the chairman asking for a moment of silence for Vince Leota. Vince Leota is a former councilman, a city employee, and a very good friend. He ran the core community service program since I became mayor. Probably the first five, six, or seven years, he did it gratis. He did not get paid for it. He did it as a volunteer. Later, he came on board and we paid him as a part-time employee. Vince did a great job. He's gonna be sorely missed, and I would ask you to keep him and his family in your prayers. I also want to mention Marlene Ziel, who was a very active and longtime resident of Garfield Heights. She was the athletic director's assistant, and she will really be, she was a great gal, and she really helped every time the city needed to get information about the athletics. She came to our aid constantly, and she's gonna be sorely missed. And lastly, I'd like to mention that Fred Maciccia, who's a very active Garfield Heights resident, Ward 7 resident, he's also sits on the board in Merrymouth, lost his grandson the other night, his 19-year-old grandson in a car accident. It's really been a sad week when you hear things like this happening, and you realize that some of your problems aren't as bad as we, we think. So I would ask you all to keep these three individuals in your prayers. They certainly deserve them. Next, I want to move on and say, I want to make an announcement that after much discussion with my wife and my family, I've decided to retire from the mayor's position as of February 1, 2021. I want to thank all of the council members that have served with me in the last 11 years for the support for me and their commitment to the city of Garfield Heights. I want to thank my staff and all of my employees for their dedication, hard work, and loyalty. But most of all, I want to thank the residents of Garfield Heights for allowing me to represent them for the last three terms. Now the question, why am I retiring? To dispel some rumors, I am not sick, at least not physically sick. I want everybody to know that my reason for retiring is very simple. I started working when I was 16 years old, I'm now 73, and I just feel it's time for a break. I want to walk away, sort of fade away off into the sunset, but I want everybody to know that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve as mayor for the home, for my hometown, Garfield Heights, for the last 11 years, and I wish all good fortune to the city in the future. Thank you very much for everybody's help in my terms. And we'll now move on to tonight's legislation. Ordinance number one allows us to go out for proposals for materials and services for 2021. Ordinance number two, we are renewing our contract with Cuyahoga Soil and Water District for Stormwater Prevention and Management. Ordinance number three is an ordinance to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights for Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District for Public Education. Ordinance number four, we're adding our website to the posting places for the city meetings. Resolution number one is a resolution that I highly support for Vincent Leota. And resolution number two is a resolution to apply for Community Development Supplemental Grant for the purpose of developing a trail plan at Wargo Farm. We had many meetings about this. We talked about putting developments in. We talked about different uses for Wargo Farms. In those meetings, the residents said they would like it to remain green. We are working now with the metro parks. I'm sorry, we're working now with the metro parks to try to make this all happen, and this grant would truly help us with putting some trails in. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I want to wish everybody a happy and very healthy and prosperous new year, and with that, you have my report.
Thank you, Mayor Clova. Does anyone have any questions for Mayor Clova on his report this evening? If there are none, we will move on now to communications from citizens on tonight's agenda. Is there any, anyone wishing to, to comment specifically on tonight's ordinances and resolutions that are on the agenda? Okay, if there are none, then we will move on to tonight's ordinances and resolutions, beginning with ordinance number 1-2021. Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number 1-2021, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova, co-sponsored by Councilmen Burke, Nanadovic, Blake, and Donahue. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies, Finance Director, the mayor, or his designee to advertise for proposals for various materials, services, and supplies for the year ending December 31, 2021.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
This is Matt Burke. I vote yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that ordinance number 1-2021, under title consideration, had seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vote yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that under suspension of the three reading rule for ordinance number 1-2021, there were seven yes votes. This time, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 24. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance numbered 1-2021, under waiver of Rule 24, there were seven yes votes, and now on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Ordinance?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under ordinance number 1-2021, on the adoption, ordinance number 1, 2021 stands adopted with seven yes votes. I just got a text that Mr., Mr. Taglerini was, had his hand up, although I did not see his hand up on my, on my screen here, but I would like to make a motion to give him some time to speak. Will the clerk please take a roll call on my motion to give Mr. Taglerini some time to speak on tonight's agenda?
All right. Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Taglerini, if you would please unmute, and you can address council specifically on tonight's agenda.
I thank you very much. My concerns are on resolution number 022021. This is about Fargo Farms' properties. It will be allowed to connect with the metro parks to build through a trail system through Wargo Farms. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I believe council should have a third reading on this issue, possibly a Zoom meeting so that all citizens can voice their opinions and thoughts. I know this was a big concern a year ago at the meetings that were held, and decisions were really not made. Now council is going to vote on it. Council needs to be more transparent and allow and talk with the residents. I urge all residents to call in now to your councilmen and light up their phones and just ask for a third reading and possible Zoom meeting in the future. They'll see that the residents are concerned. Again, I don't believe this is a bad idea. I just think that someone should be, some of the issues should be discussed to all citizens, not just the council members. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taglerini. Okay, we will move on to ordinance number 2-2021. Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number 2-2021, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova, co-sponsored by Councilman Burke, Nanadovic, Blake, and Donahue. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew an agreement on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights with the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District for the purpose of participating in the storm water pollution prevention program.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that ordinance number 2-2021, under title consideration, had seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance number 2-2021, under suspension of the three reading rule, had seven yes votes. This time, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 24. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under waiver of Rule 24, ordinance number 2-2021 had seven yes votes, and on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance number 2-2021 stands adopted with seven yes votes. We'll move on now to ordinance number 3-2021. Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number 3-2021, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova, co-sponsored by Councilman Burke, Nanadovic, Blake, and Donahue. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights with the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District and Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the purpose of public involvement and public education regarding soil and water conservation.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance number 3-2021, under title consideration, had seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yeah.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under suspension of the three reading rule, ordinance number three dash two thousand twenty-one had seven yes votes. This time, I'd like to make a motion to waive rule twenty-four. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under waiver of rule twenty-four, ordinance number three dash two thousand twenty-one had seven yes votes. And on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
David?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance number three dash two thousand twenty-one stands adopted with seven yes votes. We will move on now to ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-one. Will the clerk please read the title?
Ordinance number four dash twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Councilwoman Shayla Davis and Councilmen Burke, Dudley, Blake, and Donahue. An emergency ordinance amending section one-one-three-point-zero-one-eight, hosting places of the qualified ordinances of the City of Garfield Heights.
At this time, I'd like to motion to, uh, make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-one, under title consideration, had seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take the roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under suspension of the three reading rule, ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-one had seven yes votes. And on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that ordinance number four dash two thousand twenty-one is adopted with seven yes votes. We'll move on now to resolution number one dash two thousand twenty-one. Will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution number one dash twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova and Councilman Matt Burke, co-sponsored by all of council. A resolution by the mayor and council on behalf of the residents of the City of Garfield Heights honoring the memory of Vincent R. Leota and extending sincere condolences to his family.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under title consideration for resolution number one dash two thousand twenty-one, there were seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under suspension of the three reading rule, resolution number one dash two thousand twenty-one had seven yes votes. And on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Before I vote, I just want to say thank you to, uh, to Vince Leota Senior for everything that he's ever done for the City of Garfield Heights. He was a lifelong, um, resident and I, and I got to know the man, um, probably ten years ago. He was, oh, a, just a vast amount of knowledge for me. He was, uh, very helpful to me and I hope that, um, I pray for his family and may he rest in peace. And with this, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
I vote, Vince will truly be missed. My sympathies go out to him and his family. Uh, what Vince did for this community, he will be very hard to replace. And with that, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Um, before I vote, I'd like to give my, send my condolences to his family. And I want to say, uh, I met Vince in two thousand and seven and had the pledge that I actually served on council with Vince. And I had to say, he was a solid guy. He, Vince was a solid, he was solid as they come, you know? And if he say he was gonna do something, he did. He didn't shortchange you, you know? And he worked from the heart and that, and that made a big difference. And during the time I worked with him, my first time on council, and I tell you, I, I, I felt real comfortable. I came in and I was the only, um, black member of council for, from that time of twenty, uh, what was it, two, twenty, uh, nineteen. But he made you feel comfortable, you know? He, he, you did, you just got good vibes from working with him. And that's what I liked, cause he cared about the, the community, cared about people regardless of their race, nationality, or anything like that. And he was everything that a council person should to be when it came for representing the people within his ward or any part of the community. And I just want to say, uh, it was a pledge and I really enjoyed working with Vince, serving with Vince on Garfield Heights City Council. And with that, I vote yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Before I vote, I would like to express my condolences to Kay and the rest of Vince's family. And, uh, Vince got me started in this, uh, some sixteen years ago when he started the block watch movement in Garfield Heights along with Nick Leota. And, um, he told me one day, he says, I'm through. He says, you're the next councilman. And here I am today, twelve years later. Um, he's going to be missed. He was a good friend. We had our disagreements, but we always laughed about him. And, uh, Vince, rest in peace, and I vote yes.
Davis?
Uh, before, before I vote, I'm a little emotional. Um, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Leota about four years ago, though he's thirty years my senior. We actually became very good friends, to the point during the pandemic, he pulled up at my house, him and Kay, at eight o'clock in the morning, blew his horn, called my phone and said, come to the door. And I said, what? Why are you outside of my house? And I go to the door and they were blowing kisses and waving because we couldn't interact with each other. And, you know, when I got on, from the moment I decided to run for council in twenty seventeen, Vince supported me when many other people didn't. He showed up at my house and he, he fussed and cussed the whole time about everything, but he was truly a friend. We talked often. I spent a lot of time with him. Um, I appreciate Kay for, you know, welcoming, welcoming me into their family. And I, I'm just, it was a rough day to hear that he was gone. And I appreciate being able to participate in the services last week. Um, I'm praying for the family and, um, he's just truly gonna be missed. He wa, he was my friend. He still is my friend. That thirty-year difference didn't, didn't mean a thing. And that, that man was full of life. And he's up in heaven having him a good old time, I am certain of that, and making everybody around him happy. And with that, I vote yes. Thank you.
Blake?
I too would like to send my condolences to the Leota family. You know, listening to some of the things that my colleagues have said, it, it spoke to the person that he was, uh, is extremely, he was an important person in our community and he'll be missed and, and may he rest in peace. With that, I vote yes.
Let the record show that resolution number one dash two thousand twenty-one stands adopted with seven yes votes. And we will move on now to resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one. Will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution number two dash twenty-twenty-one, sponsored by Mayor Vic Collova, co-sponsored by Councilman Nenadovich, Burke, Blake, Donahue, Vaughn, and Councilwoman Davis. An emergency resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to apply for community development, development supplemental grant, grant funds for the purpose of developing a trail plan at Fargo Farms.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
You're muted.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under title consideration, resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one had seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. However, I want to caution, uh, council to please vote the way, uh, you would normally want to vote on this. I know we've had plenty of meetings in regards to Wargo Farms, but it's my, um, understanding that if, uh, residents want to be heard, they should be heard. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
No.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, I vote no.
Dudley?
Oh, excuse me. On this, uh, I'll be, now, excuse me, man, I got a little distracted then. Now, we, we doing the vote for passage?
No, for the suspension of the three reading rule, Mr. Don.
Okay, you gotta excuse me. I was still thinking about our buddy. All right, excuse me there. Uh, I, I vote, uh, vote no.
Donahue?
No.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes no.
Davis?
No.
Blake?
No.
Let the record show that under suspension of the three reading rule, there were seven no votes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pass for a second reading. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovich?
Nenadovich votes yes.
Davis?
Davis, yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one will be read for a second time at our next council meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. That concludes our resolutions and ordinances for this evening. We will move on now to miscellaneous, or excuse me, to comments by citizens. Will the clerk please read the rules?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the city hall department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a city hall department or councilperson is made and there's a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then be presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizen shall be heard more than once.
Is there any resident that would like to address council this evening that has spoken to their councilman or other councilmen in the city? I don't see any hands up, so if there are none, we will go to miscellaneous business. Will the clerk please read the rules?
This involves the business of council and the legislative function. Any other problems should be directly dealt with by the department involved. This area of the agenda shall be limited to legislative business, ward business, lack of attention to ward problems, and so forth.
Tonight, we'll begin with, uh, Councilman Dudley in Ward One. Councilman, I'm, I'm glad to see that you are, uh, back at it and, um, you look, you look healthier. So you have the floor, Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Chairman, this is the mayor, uh, Councilman Dudley. I don't want to interrupt you, but it's something that I have to bring to everyone's attention at this time. Uh, is it okay if I take the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, Mr. Collova.
Uh, just to let you know, on that, uh, second reading, tomorrow is the final day for us to turn that grant in. Uh, so with that vote, what means, what that means is that if we do the trails, we'll be paying for them out of the city and not with a grant. So I don't have a problem with that. But just so you know, at all the meetings that most of council was at, not all of council, it was a residence that did not want the buildings to go up. They did not want, we had a developer that wanted to put houses up. They didn't want that, they wanted the gra, uh, you know, they wanted to keep it green. And then that Metro Parks got a hold of us because the residents reached out to Metro Parks and asked Metro Parks to contact us and see if there was a better way. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that because of that vote tonight, that grant, we, we won't be able to get that grant. But, but I, I'm, I certainly can live with that. I just want everybody to be aware of what it was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collova. Okay, Mr. Dudley, you have the floor.
Well, you know, mayor, you know, that, that information you just fed was not even shared with me. I had, I didn't have any privilege with the information you just talked about. Uh, I didn't know nothing of that and somehow I might have missed it if it was a meeting I was missing or something that was done while I was sick. But I wasn't even aware of that. That part wasn't shared with me. Okay. Well, let me go ahead and get this started. And since we're on you, mayor, I, I get you out the way first here. You know, I want to tell you something, uh, I think we, man, you met, just in case you played hooky for your last meeting, uh, man, you met Brown back in, somewhere around two thousand and five. I believe you were running for council president at the time and I were running for city council. And that's how long we'd have known each other for, about fifteen years. But, uh, once you got elected and I got elected and you came back and you made mayor, I'll tell you, it, it's been a pleasure working with you, man. I know we had some little, uh, bumps along the road, but the good times far outweigh I appreciate, you know, knowing Jeannie and my family appreciate knowing her, you know? So I'm gonna wish you the best in your retirement and I thank you for sticking it out as long as you did because like I say, as people don't realize, it's not easy. It definitely is not easy. Like you say, you spent your whole life in Garfield Heights and it's time for you to kind of get out and enjoy yourself, you know, and invite us out to the ranch. But I would tell you something, man, I want you to enjoy yourself and truthfully, I understand. I have no hard feelings. I understand, you know? I understand. That is that time. And so I'm gonna wish you the best and wish Jeannie the best, man. And I thank you for the years that you put in. I know we'll be remembered and we'll remember you up here in the ward because like I say, you came through more times than we're not expected, but more times that you didn't have to. Sometime you bent over late night calls that mean you had Saturday or Sunday conversation to get stuff done, but I just appreciate it. So with that, mayor, I want to say thank you and you enjoy your retirement, you and Jeannie both.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. And I'd like to congratulate Ms. Daniels of being coming Garfield High School Board President and Ms. King has become Garfield High School Board Vice President. I believe both of them are, not believe, I know they, both of them are two hardworking individuals and they only going to serve in the best interest of Garfield High City School in keeping, moving forward and making it better. We appreciate that. Also, I wanted to, once again, give my condolences not just to Vince Leota, but for everybody who done lost family members, you know? We know it's been some rough roads and it's been a lot of passing. I never saw this many people, you know, passing my life. I mean, I'm just losing track, even up in my own ward and we just see if we have a lot of good people having their homecomings. So my condolences to all of their families. I wanted to mention too, before I forget, this coming Thursday, and I'm also going to post it, actually, I'm gonna be on the Brown, Kimberly Brown Show. It's going to be on Thursday at 11:00 a.m. on 95.9 FM and that's iHeart or iHeart.com Media, but I will be definitely on their show and everything. And also, I want to mention that we are going to be, we haven't set the date, but this year, we are going to do a Stop the Violence. You know, we're gonna have a gathering and everything. It's not a protest, but it's a gathering because I don't know if people didn't realize, but you had never saw this much killing. You had never saw this many people being killed. It's not just about black or white. I mean, people being killed, period. You know, we can't look at Cleveland, you can't look at Garfield, you can't look at Maple High. It's everywhere. And so this is going to be a nice peaceful gathering and stuff and we, it's going to call attention to it. We will get the information posted within the next couple of days and we looking for people to come out and just basically give you prayers. And what we're going to do differently at this, we are going to actually call off the names of all the people in Garfield Heights who have lost their lives through senseless violence. And that's what we plan to do on this one here. And so also on Thursday, while I'm on Kimberly Brown Show, I get to celebrate my birthday and on the 16th, I'll be celebrating my 40, celebrating our 42nd wedding anniversary. So let's keep going on prayers and hope that me and my wife get many more years together and everything. But once again, mayor, you enjoy that trip and you enjoy yourself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and everybody be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Donahue?
Just a few things. Mayor, nowhere in this resolution does it say that we had this time limit on that. If our vote may have been different if we'd have known about the time limit, that it had to be, you know, it had to be turned in. So I'm blaming the paperwork and if I come out of the law office, it's on them. But besides that, I appreciate all you've done for the city since you've been mayor. You've reduced our debt immensely. Whoever's taken, well, the person that's taking over next, I hope they just continue Thank you very much for what you did. And I'd like to congratulate Ms. Daniels and Ms. King on their new, their promotion with the school board. Appreciate that. I'm sure you both do very well. And Vince Leota's family, I can only give you my condolences. There's too many people that passed away around the holidays. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Nanadovic?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Before Mr. Nanadovic, I would like to make a motion for us to reconsider that resolution tonight. Are we allowed to do that and can we get that passed tonight?
You know, I've never had this situation before.
Either I, I asked that question of the law department.
So you're making, go ahead. So you're making a motion to take resolution number?
Oh, two.
Two dash two thousand twenty-one and place it back on tonight's agenda at this time?
Yep.
Done legally.
On the motion made by Councilman Vaughn to place resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one back on the agenda at this time, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Chuck Donahue. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Vaughn?
Right, just a sec, just a second. Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes. Resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one has been placed back on the agenda at this point in time. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive or to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes. Resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one has been placed back on the agenda at this point in time. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive or to suspend the three reading rule. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Before I vote, Mr. Chairman, do we, putting it back on the floor like that, we have to go through the considered by title and all the other actions involved in passing legislation? Is there anybody from the law department that can answer that for us?
I believe, Mr. Nanadovic, we've already voted yes to consider by title. What we are doing now is we're suspending the three reading rule again, as we would have, would have had to do at our next reading.
Okay. And I vote yes.
We're doing that.
I vote yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
That's everyone.
Okay. Let the record show that under suspension of the three reading rule for the second time this evening, that the, there were seven yes votes. At this time, I'd like to waive rule 24, make a motion to waive rule 24. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Burke?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Let the record show that under waiver of rule 24, resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one, there were seven yes votes and on its adoption, beginning with Councilman Burke.
Burke?
Before I vote, I just want to make a comment that for the record, I have been to about four meetings in regards to Wargo Farms within the last year and a half, even before COVID. And the majority of the residents that have spoken at those meetings did not, were not in favor of the Wargo Farms being developed. This particular resolution and this particular grant would only happen have, if, if the Wargo Farms were to get sold to the Metro Parks. All of the residents that I have spoken to in Ward Seven have indicated that they would rather have something, if it's going to be sold, they would rather have it sold to somebody like the Metro Parks where they feel they can still use the property and, and that was its true intent. With that, I vote yes.
Vaughn?
I vote. This has been a big issue in Ward Seven for the past 11 years that I've been sitting, sitting on council. As Matt stated, the residents did not want a housing tract in there. They did not want any development of that type. Going in partnership with the Metro Parks allows it to still be used for what it was intended to be when purchased for recreation, for trails and that type of thing. With that, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Before I vote, like I say, we can read and see that it says about developing a trail plan, an actual plan. And I remember Councilman Vaughn attending the meeting where people were adamant about not having no type of housing development up there and everything. And going on, it's thanks to Councilman Vaughn who talks to the people up there who lives in this ward. I do not live on Ward Seven. I'd be up that way, but he actually lived and he communicate with the people. And I take his word on this here, that they will be comfortable with something like this here where the property is not being used for the development, but something that they can utilize as a family. And with that, I vote yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Before I vote, I'd just like to say, honestly, I went against my better judgment in voting with everyone else, which I should not have originally because it's my understanding that this is to apply for grant funds. This is not for the sale of the land like we were discussing last year. So I take full responsibility for not doing what I properly felt I needed to do at that This is just an attempt to apply for the grant. The deadline is tomorrow, but I will say, if in fact, our economic development department knew about this grant funding prior to today, it should have been submitted a while ago, I think. And that's the bigger issue because we're now waiting to the last minute trying to, you know, vote one way and then turn around and mend it and vote another way. I do understand though, that sometimes grants come through at the final hour and you just have to do what you have to do to try to get the money. With that, I vote yes.
Blake?
Before I vote, I would like to say that I have attended some of the meetings that Councilman Vaughn and Councilman Burke had attended and I agree with their comments that many of the residents would like the property used for recreational purposes and things like that. And with that, I vote yes.
Let the record show that resolution number two dash two thousand twenty-one stands adopted with seven yes votes. At this time, I would like to make a motion to reconvene miscellaneous business. Will the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Burke?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovic?
Nanadovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Okay. We had left off with Councilman Nanadovic. It's your turn.
Thank you.
The floor, sir.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate Ms. Daniels and Ms. King on their new endeavor as president and vice president of school board. And again, my condolences to Vince and all the people that we had lost in this past few weeks. They'll be sadly missed. Can't say enough about Vince, so I'm gonna stop right there. Vic, I've said it before and I'll say it again and I'll die saying it. You had a plan, you saw the plan through and you accomplished everything that you said you would, plus I respect you for that. I consider you a very good friend and good mentor that you were. We may not have agreed all the time, but that cat got the canary grin that you had on your face all the time told me, shut up, Mike, you're going in the wrong direction. So look at Matt, he's got that same damn grin right now. But Vince, or Vic, good luck, you and Jeannie. And I know you'll be around, you're not leaving the country or anything like that. And I look forward to seeing you guys a lot more. With that, I'm done for the evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nanadovic. We'll go to Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to take time to thank our chief of police, Mark Kay, and Officer Mark Lee, who assisted me on Christmas Eve delivering 75 dinners to seniors throughout the city. That was the night of the storm. And also a Jeep group, I don't know if you guys are aware, they drive these Jeep Wranglers. So there were about 15 of them. They had Christmas lights on, people were dressed up in Santa suits and tree costumes. So we delivered the dinners. It took us to about 9:30, 10 o'clock at night because it got really bad out there and by the time we ended, it was